They agree to do that?
Yeah.
The historical side?
Good evening. I call this meeting of the city council to order. And clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
And Mr. Shilin.
Present.
Eight council members present.
Very good, thank you. You'd all rise with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening. He'll leave us an invitation. Thank you, sir.
Primal. In the heaven of father, we're gonna begin this as we should tonight and keep first things first. As a community and as a nation, we should and must grieve the loss of our law enforcement officers. As sad as it is, we have to stop and do this. This officer's name was Gary Michael. He gave his life in service to his community of Clinton, Missouri, Henry County yesterday morning. And lord, that's a heavy load for his family and for the community he served and for all of us who love and respect our police officers. To connect to that, we lost three Marines in training off of the coast of Australia on Saturday. We've been hit really hard, especially in the Marine Corps lately, with training and aircraft incidents. We pause now to remember this officer and the Marines that have fallen again. Father, we thank you for hearing our prayer and accepting our humble moment of silence. We pray now for this beautiful weather that you've sent to us after some rather extreme heat in July. It truly is a breath of fresh air. We're getting the rains that we need. The farmers' crops are going to be abundant and we all do well here in mid-America when our farmers prosper. I'm grateful, Lord, for the community we live in. I don't want to be repetitive, but the lifestyle that we're able to enjoy living here in this community is both a privilege and a blessing. And I want to thank you for those, Lord, who take care of this city by day and by night, keeping our homes and families safe, protecting our lives and properties, and seeing that the perpetual work of this city goes forward day by day. That would include administrators, our mayor and council persons, all who lead departments within this city, our police officers and firefighters, and every person on the street every day serving this community. I am grateful for them. I lift up before you, but not an exhaustive list, but this list would include Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Chilin, Mr. Moore, Gabriel Polston, and any and all others. That would include Chief Myers and any and all others who needs your daily touch as part of the city family. We pray for this session tonight, those that will lead it, those that will participate, and any decisions that are made, we pray they are pleasing to you. Until we meet again, we thank you, those who faithfully serve in Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
At the beginning of every council meeting, we set aside a time for visitors who are not on the agenda and that have an issue or concern that they would like to address the city council over. There will not be any die, give or take on that, but again, we would accept your testimony. And so at this time, I invite anyone that has a concern that they would like to share with council to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to a public hearing. And a public hearing is to consider certifying the rate of levy for the property taxes. These will be real taxes, or real property taxes for the 2017 tax year within the city of Fulton. So at this time, the format for the hearing will be as follows. We'll have a call for, three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of certifying the rate. And then I'll issue three calls for anyone wishing to support the proposed rate. So at this time, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of the proposed rate of levy for the real property taxes of, for the 2017 tax year? Please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed tax rate for the 2017 tax year?
Can I make a comment?
Just a second. With, and seeing again, no one coming forward, Mr. Bill, go ahead.
I just want to report that this is actually a lower levy than last year, but with the reassessment that was recently completed, we don't know exactly what impact it will have. The levy that we established last year was .5587. And the levy that we're proposing this evening is .5291. So the levy itself is down about .03 cents per hundred. Now, this is just on the city. So when you get your tax bill, the city taxes are about eight to nine percent of your tax bill. The rest of it goes to the public school system, the county, ambulance district, special services, and library. But the city makes up about eight, eight to nine percent of your total tax bill. And it is a reduction. I just want...
Thank you. We'll consider that a informational item. Third and final call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed tax rate? Again, seeing no one coming forward, issue three calls for anyone speaking in favor of the proposed tax rate. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Again, no one coming forward. I'll issue the second call, is anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Again, no one coming forward. I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed tax rate? Again, no one coming forward. We'll declare this public hearing closed and we'll now move back to our regular published agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Of tax rate, or should we wait till we get to the ordinance?
Well, we do it at the ordinance.
Okay.
That's okay. Or you can do it when you pass.
No, that'll work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approval of the consent agenda? Let's see, what do we have on the consent agenda? We have approval of the high school council request for a homecoming parade on September the 29th. And we also have the approval of the request for Westminster College to close Seventh Street between Westminster Avenue and Hickman Avenue on Monday, August 21st. I believe that was alluded to earlier in the work session. Those are the only two items on the consent agenda. Is anyone desiring to take an item off the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is. And I do have a second also. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say five seconds. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Okay, thank you very much. Well, now we move on to unfinished business. Looks like we have one item, and that's a hospital update. Again, very similar to the last update. I wish I had quite a bit of good news to report, although, again, we continue to work diligently on trying to find someone who would take over the hospital building as it is and continue on with the hospital operation. However, also in our conversations and trying to look at this as realistic as possible, we've also taken another route whereby we are looking for an organization that would come in and provide urgent care for the community in case that we do not find anybody to come take over the hospital. And I've been in discussions more along those lines at this point than I have been with someone finding to take over the hospital operation. I like to say that the folks that own the hospital, New Health, I believe that they're called, they're sort of like an automobile dealer and they're stuck on their sticker price that's on the windshield. And they think that they need, and rightfully so, I have no doubt with their $6 million figure that, you know, they can justify that and understand that they probably have an appraisal to justify that. Otherwise, they would borrow nearly the money that they have evidently borrowed. However, I cannot see this community being able to pay $6 million for that hospital building. And again, that's why I'm going down the alternative route and trying to make sure that we have at least seven day a week of urgent care and as many hours as we possibly can under that scenario, so.
And they're not even considering any of the deterioration of the building or the equipment inside the building or anything?
I really can't speak for them. I've again approached them as late as last week, again, over the requested purchase price. And I think at this point, you know, it's in a negotiation. The clock's ticking. September 22nd's coming. I, even if, even if we got really serious on it right away, I can't see us necessarily having something in there by September 22nd. So therefore, I think it, to whose us as a community, make sure that we have an alternative in place. And that's why I'm continuing to go down that other route. Hopefully, yes, that we'll have a white knight ride in on his horse with $6 million. Excuse me, their horse. It may not be a male gender. But anyway, so that's kind of really pretty much a summation of it. And we continue to have conversations. Matter of fact, I'll invite you in the morning at 10 o'clock. The commissioners are coming in and it'll be an executive conference room. Again, for this discussion, continue this discussion with them and trying to find a route to go. They frankly, my impression is, do not necessarily like the scenario of the urgent care. So they think that we need to keep the hospital open and I agree with them. So we'll continue to see what they have and what ideas they have. Hopefully, but anyway, all I can do is talk from where I am coming from and that's kind of where it's at.
Now, are they taxed? Are they, like the county, do they tax them or anything? Or is it because it's a health center, they're not taxed?
No.
They put a dollar value on it?
They are a private entity and they are taxed like any private entity. So yes, I'm sure they pay property taxes and there can be abatements there.
So is their property tax showing it's worth $6 million?
I'm not sure. I did not, I have not gone to the assessor. I'll check. I doubt it. Assessor typically does not utilize. But again, he, I'm sorry, I'll back up on that. They are required, because that's why he reassessed everybody, to get our property, to get our property values as close to market value as possible. Since they purchased the hospital just within the last 36 months, it probably is scheduled right around the purchase price, which I think was in the neighborhood of $4 million. And so, and they probably have not picked up the additional $2 million that they put into the consent.
My thought is, though, they're a private for proper profit. If they can't make it, why do they expect us to take over and we can make it?
Good question, Ms. Gray. The, you know, yes, we've had a lot of discussion. Of course, I know the community continues to have discussion, because I have it with every place I go, you know. But, and matter of fact, I'll speak with the optimist in the morning. So maybe they, maybe they have come up with a good positive answer, right? But anyway, yeah, the one thing that has really hurt the operation of the hospital out here happens to be the thing that the community, from I gather, feels that we need the most, and that's the emergency care.
Well, I agree with the one gentleman that said, if we lose it, my property values just drop significantly. And that was one of his reasons to, I want to keep it here whatever it takes, so.
I know those arguments are always out there and, you know, we just have to see what it does to property value.
Thank you for your time and effort on this headache.
Thank you. It's been a real education and I've enjoyed parts of it. I don't enjoy why I'm having to do it, but, okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business. And it looks like Mr. Kyle's gonna update us on a T. Is that T or T?
T, Traffic Engineering Assessment. What it stands for. Anyways, MODOT is now accepting applications for folks like ourselves to apply for funds to either study traffic or sidewalks. This is the first year that these funds are available to assess sidewalks. So that's some worthy, you know, a little bit worthy to note. You know, I do, I've got a sense from MODOT that they're going down the road. They have a sidewalk plan for themselves. When they sweep through town next year and do Business 54, they're addressing sidewalk issues because they're mandated to. And I'm assuming at some point, they're gonna mandate those kind of actions on us if we apply for, you know, federal or state fundings from them. So, you know, this being the first year that they're allowing sidewalks to be assessed with these funds, maybe that's a clue that they're headed down that road, or maybe I'm just dreaming that up. You know, it's, right now, that's just an opinion. So we, the most, the most that they would give us is $10,000, actually $8,000. We would have to, we would have to support it with at least $2,000. So we have not, I guess we're here to discover, do we want to even apply for it? Do we want to apply for a sidewalk issue? You know, one thought was, we could study a portion of the downtown area which could support a larger, much larger grant, showing planning for a much larger grant down the road to do major work in the downtown area to rehab it and make it look really nice. That was one thought.
How many feet do we get for $10,000?
How many feet do we get for $10,000? I do not know the answer to that. I was hoping to have that answer.
You hoping I wouldn't ask?
No, I actually asked that question, I asked that question of an engineering firm and he was, they were, they were gonna try to get me something by this meeting, but they didn't get it. So I guess they're off the list.
I mean, that would be one of the first things I would want to look at.
Yeah, I mean, it would not, obviously, $10,000, that would not, that would not pay for an engineering company for what they make, come in here and assess it all. They would basically set something up for us to finish the work, type of thing. But, you know, Bill and I have talked about it a little bit. There's a couple different ways we could go. You know, it could be a traffic study of a location in town.
Are you talking mainly Court Street, or what are you talking?
As far as downtown goes?
Yeah.
Talking about the downtown area.
Are the walks that bad?
The whole downtown area, brick area.
The only thing I know is Mrs. Reclu has mentioned for the handicap. Is everything that bad and is this small amount gonna do us any good?
This small amount would give us, would give us the beginnings of a study. So is it actually producing anything out in the field that's where you're walking, out on the sidewalks that you're walking? No, it would tell you where to focus your efforts on. It would give you a planning, it'd be a planning tool, is all this would be.
Now, I keep hearing on the news, MODOT is broke. They're talking about raising our gas taxes. How can they give us any money if they're already broke?
Well, if they tell you they had money, we wouldn't give them anymore.
I guess we're, I guess, I can't answer that.
Kyle, if we take this, try for this grant, and we have enough to study an area downtown, don't you think it'd be beneficial to start somewhere, or?
Yeah, I mean...
What do you guys think? What do you think?
You gotta start somewhere now.
Give you a mo, yeah.
I will say, you know, these funds are usually available on, you know, recurring basis. So next year, they'll probably be available. We may be in better position to apply for them next year. You know, right now, we do have a bunch of money soaked up into some projects in 18. So probably realistically, realistically, it's gonna be the beginnings of some work that, you know, beginnings of a study that sits on a shelf for at least, at least a year and a half, at least, you know. So...
By then, we might have to repeat the study in order to get...
Well, give us a bench.
I doubt... You see where my questioning is going? You know, it's always great to take somebody else's free money, but if we're not gonna be able to do anything with it, and we're gonna have to repeat effort at some point in the future to do it.
I mean, Jeff, I'm not sold, it's worth the effort right now myself.
And that's what I'm asking.
I did ask an engineering firm, another engineering firm today. I talked it over with them and they believe, though the metropolitan areas, metropolitan areas have to have these plans to get more funding, he does not believe that's gonna trickle down anytime in the near future upon small towns like us. So that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, we've spoke, you know, ADA required back in the 1990s for cities to begin to have these, have these sidewalk plans. So that's, that's kind of another way to look at it. I'm kind of 50/50 on it, guys.
Kyle, we had a study a few years ago of the side, the condition of the sidewalks throughout the city. I thought we were kind of using that plan, or that study, to decide what to work on. You know, they were kind of rated, as I remember.
Yeah, I looked at that plan and I had, I had limited confidence in that plan.
That's probably 10 years old.
We've since, over this past year, a gentleman in my office, Josh, has walked all the sidewalks in town and has rated them. So we do have, we do have something.
Okay.
To go off of, so...
But there's been at least a couple of us talk about the sidewalks downtown, but you know, just...
Now, when you, when you do look at sidewalks, to speak to Beverly's point, when you do look at sidewalks in town, we've got a ton of sidewalks that are bad. Trying to pick an area is difficult because there's other areas that need help.
They are, they really do.
You know, it's a... So...
Kyle, I have a question. When we do the, when the state comes in to do 54 from one end to the other, we've apparently agreed to do the center part of town, which is to us?
Which is, to us, it's from...
Our portion of it, but...
Our portions from the roundabout to Avabel Press.
Right. But didn't, in that part, was it supposed to redo the sidewalks?
MODOT is redoing...
The curb and gutters at that time?
MODOT is redoing their sidewalks. We do not have enough money to do sidewalks and curb and gutter. We chose to start with the curb and gutter and the sidewalk ramps only. So the straight sections of sidewalk in that, in our area, so from, so from the roundabout to Avabel Press, those straight sections of sidewalk will not be addressed.
But we will be doing the intersections?
The intersection, the intersections where the, where the ramps, handicap ramps are, will be addressed. The straight sections...
Yeah, that's what I was liking you said before.
Yeah, the straight sections, the straight sections between ramps, we will not do at this point.
So we will do the ADA part of it, okay?
Thank you.
And if we were to get this grant, the work that would come out of that wouldn't really help us as part of that?
No, it really wouldn't help us. It really wouldn't help us with that effort, no. It would, it would truly probably only be utilized in another grant application of a larger... It would, it would truly probably only be utilized in, in another grant application of a larger scale, of a significant dollar that would help us do a major project. A piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Very good, thank you. Yeah.
As I wrote to you all in an email a couple weeks ago, my assistant, Rob Barnes, has resigned. His last day with the city is gonna be August twenty-fourth. I've asked him to come up, I want him to come up and say a few words, and we can all clap and say nice things about him.
We could.
I knew that I had accepted a position to go back to telecommunications, which many of you know is where I came from for a good number of years, was not something that I was actively looking at for, I was fat, dumb, and happy sitting in the office next to the mayor and not too far down the hall from Mr. Johnson on a daily basis. Truly has been an honor and a privilege for the last year and a half, year and, I like to say a little over a year and a half, but it's basically been a year and a half to serve the citizens of the community and, and the folks that are in front of me right now. There's a great group of people that have been with the city for a good number of years. They're dedicated, their longevity proves that. This has been a fun place to work. It's been a fun experience, and going in a different direction was not an easy decision to make. I told, I told Bill that. This has, this has been one of the toughest things that, that I've ever done. But I guess, you know, when, when, dare I say, if, you know, when you're a telephone man, I guess you're always a telephone man in some regard. The telephone's changed a bunch, but I, I look forward to the new chapter that's in front of me. But this, this has been a great experience. There's no, uh, there's no feud between Bill and I. We've gotten along wonderfully, as well as the remaining of all the, all the folks that work here for the city. It's been a privilege, and I can't say that enough, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It took me about three minutes to get him to commit to getting the first draft of the budget out before he was gone. He has, he has confirmed that we will have first read of the budget at the next city council meeting. Which really is not that far ahead of schedule, though. It's pushed two weeks. It's pushed him ahead by two, so it's, we're really not pushing it that hard. It's, it's for August. So, we'll have first read of the, of the budget at next council meeting, or presented to the council at least next, next council meeting.
This is personal. We annexed a piece of property in the city limits for him. Can we veto that now since he's been there?
Mrs. Chris Gray, let me answer it to you this way. We annexed a piece of pasture. It had an assessed value of probably two hundred dollars into the city limits. And next time that property gets assessed-
We're gonna up it.
It's gonna be assessed a little more than two hundred dollars.
Payback.
Yes, we could let him out of town, but no, we won't.
No, we won't.
We could cut utilities, though. Did you ever get, get it wired? Okay.
You can slip your resolution in the budget.
Since I kinda jumped off agenda a little bit here, but Darrell, you, would you like to talk about the smoke study, I could think tomorrow? As a beginning, particularly since the newspaper here, maybe they could warn everybody. We're gonna have a smoke screen.
We've, we've done smoke, some smoke testing in the city before, but the next couple days, we're gonna smoke downtown, basically the brick district and the outskirts.
Explain the, explain the council what smoke testing is.
So what we've done-
We're gonna smoke with brick.
They put smoke in the ground.
We contracted with Barnes McDonald to have their field crew come in and work with our field crew. They're bringing an extra smoke blower in, and it's to find the leaks in the sewer system that may be tied to gutters, maybe tied to storm drains. So, the next two days, we'll be doing some smoking. Actually, we did a lot of smoking. We're gonna do a little bit on Oak Street, Center Street, because those are areas we've had problems with before. And with two blowers here, we wanna really try to saturate that area, and then we'll move to the downtown area. And we'll have a couple bucket trucks downtown, so we can get up above, so we can see the smoke better. And if weather's permitting, Barnes McDonald's bringing a drone in to film it from the air, so we can- Our goal is to smoke downtown one time, do it correctly, and find our defects in the sewer system.
Talk about the notification you've done.
We did go to hang door hangers and gave letters to the business owners and a lot of the neighbors that we could get a hold of. And as we start downtown Thursday morning, we'll also walk ahead and remind them-
So what is your smoking doing? Is it showing us leaks in something, or what is it doing?
Yes, it's showing the breaks in the pipe, or the illegal hookups, or, you know, things that shouldn't be hooked up.
Water, or gas, or what?
Sewer. The wastewater system.
Okay, thanks.
Wastewater.
What color is your smoke? It's different than the black smoke.
No, it's, it's more or less gray, but it's a non-toxic, EPA-approved smoke. And the fire department has been notified.
Why don't you wait to the eclipse? So, so, so for Jenny's benefit, what you do is you pump a lot of smoke into the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, we'll open up the manholes, and there'll be a blower, and it's, and it, either liquid smoke, we have liquid smoke, or we have smoke bombs, and-
And then, when they, when they pump the smoke into the sanitary sewer, they look for the smoke to come out of, of places to the atmosphere. And if it's coming out to the atmosphere, that probably means that rainwater is getting into this, into the sanitary sewer. And we want to eliminate the rainwater from the sanitary sewer.
Downtown.
Right downtown.
There'll be trucks. We'll, we'll actually call you and let you know where there'll be ads, so you can, come and witness it. We'll do a little bit tomorrow, and then the main, the main push is Thursday.
Bring your camera.
Thursday, yeah, bring your camera.
Yeah, so if you, if you would want to join them tomorrow, you'd be able to get some great pictures to put in the Thursday paper to kind of warn downtown that it's gonna happen. This, there's, I think we'll, we will find several places-
I'm sure.
Of where rainwater is getting into the sanitary sewer. And then, at a later date, we will address how to correct that.
When we get set up tomorrow morning, first, we'll call you, that work? Hopefully, this will be before ten o'clock. We're supposed to start seven.
Darrell, you've already been doing this through quite a, quite a few of the older areas of town, like up in the north, northeast.
One spot that we're doing tomorrow is we smoked, and we found some things, and we fixed them, then we smoked it again, and then new things showed up that didn't show up the first time. And, and through our metering program, remember, a year or so ago, we did the meter study.
Right.
This was, this was an area that showed really bad, so we're really wanting them to come in with us and add that second smoker, so there'll be a smoker in one manhole, and then upstream, there'll be another smoker, and both of them have smoke, and I'd really try to saturate that section of line to see if we can find the rest. So, that's our goal.
If anybody has any questions, they can call City Hall, and City Hall, the staff at City Hall will have some answers for them, but if they want additional information, they'll get the name and number, and we'll give them a call back.
And what our flyer said in our letters was basically, you know, make sure all your, your drains in your basement and stuff have water in, so the traps aren't dry to keep the smoke from coming back into your house, and things of that nature.
You got one of those waiter seats that Jenny should go down that manhole and take some-
I don't think she'll see much as she goes down in there. It'll be pretty smoky.
Get you something to put on for safety.
Very good, thank you, Darrell. Appreciate it.
It's okay.
Next item on our agenda is domestic officer grant discussion. Chief Meyer, would you like to lead us in that discussion, please? Domestic officer? This could be interesting.
Yes, this grant is a grant we've had for, I'm thinking, probably close to six years. We, along with the county and the city of Holt Summit, apply and, and have been getting this grant for a domestic violence officer that assists us and Holt Summit and the county. I was, when I, when I talked to the presiding commissioner, he told me that, that may be up just a little bit, just because of, of salary increase, but our portion would be pretty close to what it is now. Also, the county, because of the tremendous increase in, that we're seeing in domestic violences, not only in the city of Fulton, but in the county, is going, they're going to apply for a second grant just to cover another officer that, we're not gonna be involved in that grant, but they're, they're gonna fund that fully through the county. So we kind of have access to two, actually, but we're only, only be paying a portion of one. So, it's the same thing we've been doing, and I think that grant's due the end of the year, so they're, they're starting to work on it.
Chief, where's this guy work out of? Where's, where's his office? Is it in your building?
What?
Where's, where's, where's his office? Where's he work out of? You mentioned three different locations, is he-
The sheriff's department provides that officer with all of their equipment, training, and a vehicle. And, and we just pay a very small portion, actually, of the cost of that one officer.
So he's basically a county employee?
Available to us.
Basically a county employee that we have available for our use.
Sure.
Yes. And with the number of, the increase in, in child abuse and sexual abuse that my officers work, it, it really helps to have this officer work the domestic violence cases, because we just don't have time.
So this, this grant's coming up, and an application will be submitted, we'll be bringing here to-
Be poured the end of the year. I'll have more information for it.
Very good, very good. Probably expect a little bit, how, how much are we putting in now, do you remember?
No, I don't, for sure.
How much?
Kathy said four thousand dollars.
That's sort of what I had in my mind. So, yeah, even if it goes up a little bit, it's still, it's a good deal for, for us, and it's nice that we can work with-
It's a tremendous deal for us, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, we kinda wanted to give you a heads up that this is coming down the pike, and again, so you can kind of be thinking about it, and it doesn't catch off, off dark. But now, move to item ten, which is council concerns. It's a time when you can bring things forward that any councilman may have that's not on the agenda, so. Let me start down with Mr. Shilah.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. West?
Good, no items.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Clu?
I have a couple. First of all, Les, the grant, it is called a car loan business across the street from Barkley School. Is, is there someone taking care of the, the grass? It's a closed business. It's a site. It's right across from Barkley.
Okay.
It's a car loan company. Title thing, yeah. It's a real mess. I don't know if it's something we-
We probably already have letters out on it, and not we'll get out one tomorrow, but I'd say we probably already have something in the works there.
It's a site.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, okay, thank you. And my other concern, I, in the news, I've heard a lot about our, our police vehicles, our Ford police vehicles. Chief, I wondered if, a question please?
And carbon malox, huh?
Yes, exactly. It's what we're, no, this is with the Ford. If we had any problems, have Harden looked at for this property?
No, we have, in fact, Jenny brought that to my attention as well.
Oh, good.
We have been monitoring those, and none of my officers have noticed any monoxide or-
Yeah.
Anything else that, and hopefully, we'll be getting a new one shortly.
Yeah, I know, okay.
But we haven't noticed anything.
Okay, well, I'm sure you were aware of it, but I just wondered if we had, make sure our guys are okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Stay there. Chief.
Chief.
Stay there, chief's keeping you.
You're popular tonight.
I said stay there.
He's here.
I have two items, and I apologize, chief, I didn't reach out to you before tonight, but it's just to refresh my memory of where we're at with the Barkley School, and the parking, and the drop-off, and the pickup. We had brought that up in the spring.
Yes, we brought that to the, probably Kyle could answer that better than I did, but it's a state road, and there's not a whole lot we can do.
Yeah, the traffic commission discussed this topic, and, and, you know, I think the chief has tried to, to work with the school on potentially making the exit a right turn only. And we've, we've discussed potentially, you know, seeing what the school can do. Brian Abbott with the school was, was there, so. See what the school can do to maybe open a little early, whatnot. You know, kind of a side item with that topic is, is bus traffic and, and the side road that they, that they enter St. Francis. Sorry, I drew a blank there. And our traffic guy, and, and Brian, we're gonna talk to the homeowners on that to discuss potential making that a, no parking on one side to help, to help bus traffic, so. There's been a lot of talk about it, to say that we've solved anything or done anything that, that, that's gonna make this year, and even better yet, would be false.
Can you find, can you come up with a plan in thirty days?
School's starting to-
We can come up, we can, we can come up with a recommendation.
Would it do any good to change the times that the school convenes, let kindergarten starts at this time, and don't let everybody go in at the same time or exit at the same time?
No, it's just, it's just the, the people are parking along fifty-four, they're parking their stop.
I just thought maybe it wouldn't be so congested all at once if we had different-
It was just three or four concerns that got brought to me last spring, hoping that we could have some sort of improvement.
Right, and, you know, we've talked about, again, maybe provide an early time to where they can, kids can come in earlier, and that might help in the morning, but in the afternoons, it doesn't help much, so. We haven't come up with a really good idea. I mean, we can, we can come up with some sort of recommendation, but it's probably not gonna be a magic bullet that fixes it.
The right turn coming out of there, you know, like you said, the exit, is that not something we can do, or are we, that's still involved with them?
He and I have talked about the right turn coming out of there, and he's pretty receptive to doing that.
Hopefully, that would help.
And that would, that would help some, somewhat.
Okay.
Would, would that require state approval?
Yeah, that was saying I won't.
I'm sorry.
Would that require what?
Would that require state approval?
No, not yet, because that's on school policy.
Coming out of their property, okay.
Now, rather, that would be enforceable. I don't know that that would be the case, but at least if we had a right turn lane there, turn arrow there, that would probably, most people would do that, and then go up and come down Westminster.
Yeah.
And I think that would eliminate a lot of our issue there, at least some of it. I think some of the issue is parking on fifty-four, and I don't know that we have a good answer for that. The state has not, they actually maintain the, the side there, and so I don't know that we can stop that without their approval.
It's a dangerous location. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
Yeah, some child.
With the cars parked out there, both morning and after school.
Kyle? Chief, could you just drop a letter off to MODOT and ask them if, I know they always tell us they ain't got the money, but if we put no parking signs up, would they have a problem for that?
At least have a right to, yeah, do that.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely approach MODOT on that.
We can ask.
Yeah.
That's right.
Good, if we, if they say yes, then it comes still back to the council to be bold enough to say yes to it, right?
Yeah. And, you know, guys, there's not a lot of area there, you know, to work with. So, that's, that's something that there's going to have to be significant buy-in from the school to, to, to produce an answer. I mean, we can't produce the answer here inside this, for the people here.
Yeah, right.
We've got to get them from them to do something.
You're right.
Well, you, you do one thing, and it make, the consequences may be worse than what the problem is we have now, like putting up a no par, no parking signs. Now what? What do those people do? They're doing what they're doing for a reason.
And I understand it is at times, for, you know, like five, 10 minutes, it is dangerous there. On the other hand, if we stop that, is it going to cause another problem somewhere else?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And that's what you said.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree, you know, it could, it could be possible.
I think both parties see it as a problem, as Bill stated. You know, the city sees it as a problem, and, and I have no doubt that, that, I know that Brian Abbott and the rest of the school sees it as an issue too, so.
Having an officer there in the afternoon or something, our officers are stretched anyhow, so, you know. Is there a solution? Is there some form of?
I'm glad there was conversation, and I'm glad it's continuing with the school district to try and come up with a solution.
Chief, would a stoplight work there?
Appreciate it.
Chief?
Did you have another issue?
Would a, would a stoplight work there?
A stoplight? I think, you know, I don't know if that would really correct the problem because they're parking on the side of the road. But if we put, you know, probably if a college needs to be a stoplight or, or something up there.
Yeah. I know where you can get one.
I don't know that a stoplight would really eliminate the problem. The problem, you know, if more people coming from south, from the south going north, took Westminster, that would probably help that problem. But they're not going to do that either.
Of course not.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you.
The other, I've had a couple of different complaints about nuisance yards, trash, overgrowth, that sort of thing. What department does that go to?
Mr. West?
Okay, thank you. I'll bring those to your attention.
Mrs. Gray?
I just have one question. At Business 54 South, and I think it's Glenstone, there's a little tiny house being built. What's the deal with that?
It's a small house being constructed.
But I mean, is it going to stay there?
Yes, it's going to-
Does this meet all of our requirements?
Yes. Well, so far, it does. We haven't done a final inspection on it, but- That's a good answer.
But is it going to be a one, I mean, it's tiny. How many people can live in that thing?
All at once.
The world is.
The biggest thing to do.
It's a new fad.
It's considered a tiny house. It's 192 square feet. That meets the International Building Code for a house. You could have up to four people in there if you want to that's unrelated, or you could have a family of six if they'll fit in there. But that, it does meet, it does meet the code.
How many square feet?
It's 192 square feet.
192.
Wow.
And, and actually, the code is less than that.
Is it really?
Well, it is in an odd shape.
Well, that's, that's the common thing right now.
In the 50s and 60s, that's the size a lot of houses were. They were small.
It's true, it's true. They were a little bigger than that, but not much.
Living room, bedroom, and kitchen.
Couple houses have probably less than six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Well, that's been, that's been on the internet and, yep, on TV. That's the common thing.
Oh, it is.
Well, it might be the common thing, but I think it looks tacky. You've got a decent neighborhood there, and you're sticking that little bitty thing in there. And then over on Bluff, it might be around maybe 7th or 8th. There's a house that the roof is actually caving in on. Are you all dealing with that? Okay. You're going to tear it down, or what are you going to do? If you wait much longer, it'll fall on its own. Okay.
Don't quote that.
I'm done, thank you, mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, actually, the little house was on my agenda also. Two or three meetings ago, I did bring up about the little house, and we were going to look into, or have a discussion on, on what we can, if we need to make some ordinances or-
Prevent that.
Set a, set an area up for little houses or just let them start being built wherever they seem to want to. Hang a wood, wherever.
Les and I, Les and I have talked about this. He's done some research. I think one thing that we talked about that could be a possible solution would be just to put a minimum, minimum house size. I think, we talked like 600 feet. You have to have at least 600 feet in order to get a residential building permit in town. We have lots, lots of houses in town at 900, 800. So, if we went, if we dropped it to six, that could be our definition of tiny house.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against the guy putting up tiny houses, but I think there ought to be areas that we allow that in or not allow it in. And I know that other cities are doing that, setting up subdivisions or plots of land that they can do that.
I was trying to say, why can't we do it?
So, I, I just wanted a discussion to go on because we haven't discussed it at all.
Do an area like we do trailer parks or something, and let it, let that be their space.
Also, I have another question, and we've talked about it several times, but the house on Locust, is there a scheduled date? People over there keep calling me and calling me and calling me about. And I know that house was approved.
I got one bid this afternoon. I'm tearing it down. I'm waiting on the second bid. As soon as we get that second bid, we'll get somebody to take it down.
I knew, I mean, I knew it had got approved, but I just, they, they were wanting to know if we had a schedule yet.
I got the first one this afternoon, the next one probably tomorrow, the next day, and we ought to, if we can get it rolled off and that sort of thing, maybe next week, we'll get it out of there.
What if you don't get a second bid? Can you, you have a deadline? I know that answer.
It comes down.
Now, it's going to limit with the bid list.
Well, yeah.
Also, I have one other question for the chief, and he can answer from there.
He's coming.
I won't make you come up here.
He's coming.
Are we, are we? As far as the amount of officers you've got, are we up to schedule on that? Or do you still need to hire some people?
Okay.
I'm, I'm down one right now.
Down one?
Yes. We have one, one of my lieutenants is retiring next week. So, actually, right now, I'm up full, full staff. But next week, when he retires, I'll-
I, I just met a new guy, day before yesterday, that just was hired. But I didn't know if you were still needing somebody or not.
There's four new guys.
Four?
Oh, wow.
That's all. All right, thank you.
Okay, very good.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Moore?
I only have three things to say. Could you believe that? First one, I want to thank the, the street department. If you're looking at Rick and my ward on that part of 7th Street, them sidewalks and, that's, it's looking really nice. Haven't finished yet. And number two, I went out to golf course. And if you haven't been out in a while, the greens and everything, it looks like it could be a picture-perfect picture taken in Golf Magazine, by the way. And my third one, I already talked to Mr. Johnson, so I'm just going to leave that one alone.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rick. Appreciate it. Very good. If, we'll move on now to resolutions. Resolution 3288 is our first one, and it has to do with accepting a, agreeing to, accepting pilot payments from the county commission. And Councilman West, I'll ask you to present this, and then Mr. Johnson can tell us about it.
All right, resolution number 3288. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with and sign on necessary documents in relation to said agreement with the county commission of Callaway County, Missouri, to accept, to accept the distribution of pilot tax payments as full and final and establish an effective date. I move that resolution number 3288 be considered at tonight's council meeting.
Second. Well, some of you may know I'm friends with the executive director of the housing authority. And she, she brought to my attention that, that she had recently made her pilot payment to the county for the property taxes. And since that's a, basically a nonprofit federal organization, they don't really pay property taxes. They pay a pilot fee, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, which their accountant determines each year based on depreciation schedule. Okay? And she said, asked about us getting it. And I said, oh, we don't get anything from the housing authority. Well, she proceeded to dig into her paperwork and came up with a document that said, going back many years, that this is the distribution. They're paying it in for normal distribute, to the county, for normal taxes, distribution as any other taxes. I got ahold of Gary. Gary acknowledged, yep, we probably ought to be doing that. The executive director of the housing authority produced a document showing how much property taxes they paid each year in the past 10 years. Gary took all that into consideration. So, what they're doing is they're taking this year's payment, giving us our due for the, what we missed out on for the past 10 years, and then divvying the remainder up across all taxing entities, us included. And the reason for this, I didn't realize we were going to need this document, but one of the taxing entities wanted this document produced to ensure that the city was not ever going to say we didn't get what we were owed. Okay? So, that's why we're having the resolution. So, the city council says, yep, we agree. This is it. We're never going to ask for any more money based, based on past taxes from the housing authority prior to August 8th of 2017.
So, how many years have we been doing this?
We're going back 10 years on this.
No, how many years have they been paying the pilot, is my question?
More than 10 years.
Yeah. Lot more than.
Well, can we just forget the past years and start from now?
Huh?
Can we just forget the past years and start from now?
We could, but we're not going to do that.
Okay. I don't want anything taken from our schools or anything. That's what my concern is.
The school is the predominant benefactor of property taxes. They are taking somewhat, but the, the total bill to get us caught up is $14,000.
So, are they going to give this to the entities or to the city in one lump sum? Is all of this coming from the housing authority or?
Yes. The housing authority makes an annual payment.
And they're going to, they're going to pay catch-up for the last 10 years. They're going to give us one lump sum.
The county's going to give us one lump sum.
Oh, okay.
Housing authority's been paying it.
Yeah.
We just want to get that.
Okay.
Another question, Bill. Is there anybody else out there doing the same thing? Anybody other, any other entities out there that are paying pilots instead of property taxes that?
Not to my knowledge, but that's a reasonable question.
And I do appreciate the county trying to make this right.
Oh, Gary's been, Gary's been super to work through on this. Has never, never blinked or never bothered him a bit. He wants to make it right.
Yeah. And we'll be good going forward here. Okay. Thank you.
It got, it just got missed one year, and they did it the same way the next year, and they did it the same way the next year.
Very good. I have a motion of the second to adopt resolution 3288. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. Resolution 3288 is adopted. We'll now move on to ordinances, ordinances, and we'll consider first reading ordinances. Bill number 1478 is a, one that approves a contract between the assessor and the commissioners and also the city for collection, or to do our assessment work. Councilwoman or Clu, would you please present 14, bill number 1478 by title only?
Yes. Bill number 1478, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the assessor and county commission of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the preparation of assessment lists and establishing the effective date. I make a motion to place bill number 1478 for second reading at our next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion, I think you heard it second?
Yeah, Wayne.
Very good. Councilor Shilah, thank you. Any further discussion of this motion? Okay. Very good. All those in favor of adopting or, adopting bill number 1478 first reading, please, for advancement to second reading, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Advance that one. Bill number 1479 is an ordinance that, again, for first reading, that establishes our new rate, property tax rate, of which we had a hearing earlier in the, in the- And Councilman Vaughn, would you please present for first reading, title only, 1479?
Bill number 1479, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and leveling taxes for the calendar year 2017 on all taxable property in the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I move place bill 1479 for second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion of the second to advance bill number 1479. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Last year, the county collected, over-collected on taxes and didn't we set some money aside? Or is that, is that all been taken care of?
We asked them to hold on to it, and it will come to us this year. We asked them to hold on to it, and it will come to us this year, is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, but we over-assessed the citizens last year, can we under-assess them this year to make up for that?
The rate was, the over-assessment was reflected in the rate, right?
Yes, the rate was set too high by the county auditor, based on the figures that were provided by the county clerk, so our rate was set at point five-five-eight-seven, it should have been point five-three-five-one. So, we had, we collected, the county collector sends us tax money every month.
Right.
We only accepted nine, ninety-five point seven-nine percent of what was billed, they're holding that other four point something percent in escrow. And in October this year, I talked to her and have her send us the money.
Okay, but my question is, is a citizen paid a hundred dollars, say, last year, and they should have only paid ninety-five, so this year, are they paying ninety-five instead of a hundred?
This year, they're paying less than what it should have been last year, it was assessed at fifty-five-eight-seven last year, should have been point five-three-five-one, and I believe the rate this year is point five-two-nine-one?
Yes.
So, they will, yeah, it will come back.
So, we went down more than it should have, I mean, this year, it ought to have been higher, and it's, and it's lower because of what happened last year, is that correct?
Correct.
In part, but a lot of it also is complicated by the reassessment.
Right.
Because we can't, you know, there, the law will not allow us to receive a windfall. So, our assessment is higher, so our rate's naturally going to be lower.
It's going to be lower.
But part of the reduction is because it was set too high last year.
Right, but I mean, I mean, the bottom line, the individual person that paid that last year paid more than they should have, should be paying less than they should this year to make up for that.
So, those two years will average out.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
It'll be, it'll be overish over the two years, okay.
Very good.
Good job.
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor advancing bill number fourteen seventy-nine to second reading, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no, okay, thank you, bill number fourteen seventy-nine advances. We'll now go on to second reading ordinances, bill number fourteen seventy-six was tabled last meeting, and it will remain tabled indefinitely unless you want to remove it, Councilman Shiverdecker?
No, sir, and it just won't show up on the agenda again.
Very good, we'll drop it off the agenda, fourteen seventy-six is a dead issue, okay, thank you.
Don't make a dead final.
We'll now, we'll now move on to bill number fourteen seventy-seven for second reading, that's an ordinance repealing our old building codes and adopting the new building codes. Councilman Moore, would you please read bill number fourteen seventy-seven by title only?
Is there any injections if we go for the third reading tonight?
No, not here.
Bill number fourteen seventy-seven, an ordinance repealing Chapter eighteen Buildings and Building Regulations, Fulton City Code, in its entirety, enacting a new Chapter eighteen Buildings and Building Regulations and establishing effective date. I move this to be, moved for the third final reading at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Very good, thank you, I have a motion of the second to advance bill number fourteen seventy-seven to third reading, is there any discussion of that motion? Excuse me, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no, okay, very good, Councilman Moore, would you please present fourteen seventy-seven for third reading?
Bill number fourteen seventy-seven, an ordinance repealing Chapter eighteen Buildings and Building Regulations, Fulton City Code, in its entirety, enacting a new Chapter eighteen Buildings and Building Regulations and establishing effective date. Move this for final passage at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion of the second to advance bill number fourteen seventy-seven for final consideration, any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no, very good, bill number fourteen seventy-seven is advanced. You've heard bill number fourteen seventy-seven presented three times, and it's now time for final consideration, please signify yes or no as the clerk reads the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Shireland?
Yes.
And Ms. Gray?
Yep.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, thank you, we've had, bill number fourteen seventy-seven is adopted. Very good, now move on to announcements, Madam Clerk, do you want to run those?
Sure, as we discussed in the work session, Fulton City Hall will close on Monday, August twenty-first, from twelve to two P.M. to observe the two thousand seventeen solar eclipse. Our next meeting of the city council will be Tuesday, August twenty-second, at six-thirty P.M. The annual MML conference will be held September tenth through thirteenth at Tantera, and those reservations have been finalized, so if you have any questions, come see me. City council will hold a retreat during the MML conference on Monday, September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, to review some proposed changes to the city charter. We don't have an exact time on that yet, but we will post that, since we will have a quorum to look over those changes. The annual town and country dinner will be held on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, at five o'clock P.M. at Show Stock Outfitters in Kingdom City. So, if any council members would like to attend, please let me know by our next meeting. And then I wanted to also announce that we are going to have the annual hunter's safety course for bow hunting within the city limits, that's been scheduled as of this afternoon with the Department of Conservation. That class will be held on Thursday, August thirty-first, at six o'clock P., six o'clock P.M. here in the chambers.
Okay, very good, thank you. I do not have a need for an executive session this evening, and of course, do not have any appointments, so therefore, we'll consider.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Very good, we have a motion second for adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned.